Screen, please click the globe and select the language you prefer. English or Spanish or Chinese? If you do nothing, you will hear the English deliberation, but you will not be able to hear, not be able to hear English translations of Spanish or Chinese speakers during public comments. Please welcome Anna Jimenez and Ivy Zhu. We'll provide the translation service tonight. Anna, will you go over the instructions for Spanish instructions, please?
Muy buenas tardes a todos. El día de hoy tenemos interpretación disponible para el artículo 5.1. Si usted le gustaría escuchar esa sesión en español, por favor, vaya al globo que está en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione el idioma español. Muchas gracias.
Do we have Ivy?
It doesn't appear that she's here. We will put her into the Chinese language if she shows up.
During this declared state of emergency, the meeting we conducted according to California Government Code 54953E, as authorized by a resolution of the City Council. Please contact city clerk@city.clerk@mountainview.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All members of the EPC are participating in this meeting via video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting may do so live at mountainview.legisstar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast at Channel 26. As noted in the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comment during the public comment period of an item by joining the Zoom webinar with the webinar Emails and voicemail messages received by 5:00 PM today were forwarded to the EPC. All votes will be taken by roll call. Now I'll ask the EPC clerk to take the role. Ms. Whitehall?
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Here.
Commissioner Nunez?
Here.
Vice Chair Yin?
Here.
And Chair Cranston?
Here.
All commissioners are present?
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is the minutes, review the minutes from the Environmental Planning Commission meeting of December 7, 2022. First, is there any EPC discussion on the minutes? Now we'll open it up to public comment. Would any member on the public on the line like to provide comment on this item, specifically the minutes? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Is that star six on your phone? Star nine phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on the minutes?
No one is wishing to speak on the minutes.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission. Do I have a motion on the minutes from some? Please, Commissioner Clark?
Move approval of the minutes?
Vice Chair Yin?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Whitehall, can you please call the rule?
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yin?
Aye.
And Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the EPC on any matter that is not on the agenda. Speaker is allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the commission from acting on a non-agenda item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comments on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. The EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on a non-agenda item?
No one wishing to speak on a non-agenda item.
We'll bring it back to the commission for item number five, 5.1, the 2023-2031 Housing Element. Earlier this evening, earlier today, staff posted a distributed memo recommending the continuance of the public hearing on this item to be set at a date uncertain in the future. Memo is posted on the city website within tonight's agenda. Eric Anderson, Advanced Planning Manager, will now briefly summarize the memo. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cranston. The city submitted a draft housing element to HCD in November. The draft attached to the staff report tonight addresses informal comments received from HCD and council direction from December. As the staff report stated, if HCD has substantive additional comments on the housing element, the EPC would have an opportunity to review and make a recommendation on any future draft that addresses HCD comments. Staff met with HCD staff earlier today, and they provided additional substantive comments, including re-categorizing sites that should be considered pipeline versus inventory, the need to make additional findings, providing additional programs, and providing more opportunity for non-English speakers to comment on the draft. Based on this, staff is not recommending that the EPC act on the draft until the necessary changes are made. A revised draft will be posted and made publicly available, and a new hearing will be scheduled and noticed at a later date. The staff recommendation is to continue this item. Alternatives could include opening the public hearing and taking no action, or opening the public hearing and continuing with the recommendation. Staff continues to solicit input from the community on the sites inventory, programs, and other parts of the housing element. If anyone is interested in setting up a meeting or providing comments, feel free to contact Ellen Yeh. Thank you.
Are there any questions for commissioners on the staff recommendation or alternative recommended continuance? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair. Eric, I have a quick question. So then, the letters that came in expressing the different ideas and perspectives on housing element concerns that they had, are they then able to reach out to the person you mentioned now to speak about those concerns, or how would they address those needs outside of sharing their opinions with the EPC and City Council?
So yes, we are more than happy to talk to anybody who provided comments. We certainly have had meetings with several of those groups over the last several, over the last several months as we've been refining the housing element draft. And so this is not the only opportunity to provide input. There will be future opportunities to provide input, both through our ongoing outreach process, through the state-required publishing of drafts, and then, of course, the requirement that we publish anything prior to any EPC deliberation or action on a draft. Thank you, Eric.
Then the next step would be a motion, and if there is a motion that's put forward, we'll open that up for discussion and public comment. So is there a motion from a commissioner, Commissioner Clark?
Yes, based on information that staff shared, I know that we continue this item as recommended by staff.
Mr. Nunez?
I second that nomination.
Okay. Then we'll open it up for public comment. Let's see. Ms. Whitehall, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the recommendation to continue the item?
We have one speaker, Ally Saperman. Let me set up the screen momentarily. And now you did talk. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start the timer, and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Ally Saperman. I'm here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. You should have received a letter from my litigator on the housing element, just basically at this time, without significant changes. It's just simply not going to be compliant with the law and with HCD. Specifically, there is a number of non-vacant sites that are listed in the pipeline site inventory, but it's, there has not been an evidence-based analysis of whether the existing uses of these sites will cease. So unless that evidence is provided, and there's actually proof that these sites will be repurposed for housing, really encourage the city to identify more sites in the site inventory. Additionally, there are a number of sites that amount to about 1,500 units that were counted in the past RENA cycle. I really want to encourage everyone to consider adding more sites to the site inventory so we can maximize as much housing as possible. We all love Mountain View. It's a really great place, and we want as many people to be able to enjoy it as possible, as well as making sure that we are identifying enough sites in high-opportunity areas that are near transit and amenities. So again, everyone can enjoy everything that Mountain View has to offer. I've been meeting with HCD and happy to meet with anyone on the planning commission and city staff. Really want to get this housing element to a point that has a great outcome for everyone. But really appreciate all the work that's being done here. We're going to get to a really good housing element. Thank you so much.
Just for clarification for everyone else's questions, that we're specifically discussing the motion to continue this item to a first, to a future date. This is not actually, we're not collecting public comment on the housing element itself at this point. So again, is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to continue this item to a future date? Looks like we have a couple of other hands up, Ms. Whitehall.
Yes, Kevin Ma, going to allow you to talk, and go ahead.
Evening, commissioners. My name is Kevin Ma, Representative of Legal Women Voters. This is a comment about future direction to staff as they are making the future edits. We are pleased to see that staff is taking HCD's task to better prove that the sites in the site inventory are in proper order in terms of the pipeline sites being actually pipeline sites, as well as ensuring that the other sites do show enough evidence that they will be developed within the next eight years. We remain concerned about the vagueness of the programs in the draft as presented in December, in particular, the vagueness about exactly what the city itself is committing to do in the next eight years, as well as the timeline about certain programs affecting the fair housing concerns of the city being relatively late in the process. HCD has been clear that the fair housing concerns should be taken up earlier rather than later, and that the programs in the element are deficient in terms of whether they are actually going to happen. We have mentioned in the letter that the density for the church sites are still low compared to what they have been in the past decades, so we're very unsure that they will actually get developed. The programs such as the ADU fees structure is still vague in terms of what the amount of money the city is committing to pay for, and the programs to address homelessness displacement are still, lack actual ties to existing city processes, such as a displacement response strategy. And the letters from MBTC and Reach Potential Movement echo our concerns that their demands for things like COPA and CLTs are still too vague in terms of wording of possibly including or directed to pursue further, which is not really a commitment, more of a figure out that later. So those are our comments for tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is David Watson. Go ahead, David.
Hi. I'm not going to spend all the, my time just echoing exactly what Kevin said, but the, you know, I'm also with Mountain View YIMBY, and I, you know, similarly have the same concerns. The one thing I would add is that if you want a quick sort of, you know, rundown of our sort of overall recommendations for the housing element, you should check out our, check out our website. We've got a section regarding the housing element and our recommendations for it. So please, please check that out when you have a chance.
Okay. Other speakers?
No other speakers on this item.
Then we'll bring the motion back to the commission for deliberation and action. So we have a motion and a second, Commissioner Nunez?
I have a quick question for staff. Just out of curiosity, I'm wondering if you can provide insight, if not, that's fine too, just around, how, to what extent would you say or feel that additional feedback or guidance being provided by HCD does or does not reflect or align with the kind of feedback that we're getting from community groups on this matter?
That's, that's a great question, Commissioner. So the HCD process is really one of being kind of a, sort of a judge, right, in this, in this process, right? They're taking public comment at the same time that they're reviewing our draft for statutory compliance. So the public comment certainly affects their review for statutory compliance, and their approval or not is, is definitely, is going to be affected by the public comment provided to them. So that being said, the, you know, this is a public process, and there's, you know, there's a process whereby, you know, we're getting comments from HCD, getting some informal direction from HCD, you know, modifying our plan based on that, modifying our plan based on council direction at the same time. And, you know, there, all of these opportunities for, you know, there have been lots of opportunities to integrate public input in, you know, the council process as well as responding to HCD comments. And so, long story short, I think it's, you know, the, their comments do reflect some of the comments that have been submitted directly to them. We should expect that future comments will also, could also affect their future comments. To a certain extent, this is, and they were really clear about this during our meeting today, that, you know, their, their review and the integration of public comments doesn't stop, right? So, so this is, you know, this is an ongoing process that we have. Now, that being said, it is a conversation. They're looking for several things in response to comments. Either, you know, it could include modifying our programs, policies, adding sites, things like that. It could also include providing additional analysis that addresses the comment. And it could also include, you know, providing, you know, providing additional data or other information, or, you know, other comment from other stakeholders that offsets the comments. So there's certainly a lot of different ways the comments can be addressed, and HCD comments in particular can be addressed.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is because just in terms of passing a compliant housing element, right, one of the things that I worry about is kind of having, like, you know, there's obviously a lot of constituencies to balance, and we can't give every group everything they want. But for lack of better terms, you know, it's, I wouldn't want us to have always had the answer, like, staring us in the face, for lack of better words, to oversimplify, and not like, and just miss those opportunities. And then one last follow-up question on that. So in terms of, like, at this next critical meeting, it sounds like between HCD and staff, last question here, I'm just wondering what are the kind of criteria they're going to look for to determine, kind of like an evidentiary? You know, we have met this guidance, so for example, like, point number four, ensure outreach is conducted for non-English speaking, you know, we did get a couple letters from the Mountain Tenants Coalition and from Reach Potential, right? And so we have kind of two prominent, just, just for example, right, there's a lot of, but two prominent Hispanic community groups here, and they've submitted letters. Is it, is it enough to say, like, hey, here's the letters that they sent us, you know, with their ask, and here's how in this revised draft, we, like, the one-for-one kind of, you know, they didn't get everything, but here's what they did get, right? Is that kind of, and for all the other points, is that kind of like the level of evidence you need to provide, or what's the, like, you know, what is staff going to do going into this upcoming, upcoming meeting to, you know, come equipped with that evidentiary, you know, documentation indicating we have done these, these things?
I think the key for that is really making sure that translated materials are available early enough, that there's, there's adequate time. You know, I don't know, Stephanie, if we have a, a measure of what adequate is and kind of what we're, what we're aiming towards for that?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the question. So I don't think that there is an objective measurement that we're necessarily aiming toward. It's, you know, the needs in terms of translation services vary by community, and there isn't sort of a set, you know, standard to look toward. I think that part of this is making sure that we're clear with HCD, either, you know, through our meetings with them or through what we put in the document itself, about how we have made attempts throughout the process to provide translation. And then, you know, thinking about the comments that they're giving us now about whether there's been, you know, adequate opportunities and, you know, for the next phases of this process, making sure that we're, you know, keeping that in mind as we go through the next, you know, rounds of revisions on this, or round of revision. And so, you know, we're, so I think that's sort of, you know, it's sort of more of an ongoing conversation with HCD and saying, you know, we've heard what, you know, both from the community and from HCD, that this is a potential concern, and here's how we're addressing it from here on out and what we've done to date. Does this seem like it's still a concern? And, you know, sort of keeping that conversation open with them.
Awesome, yeah, I appreciate that because I think Mountain View does a far better job than most cities, but I will say, right, translation does not equal engagement, right? Translating something is not the same as engaging a community. And so, you know, given that we are having proactive in-reach, right, inbound outreach to us, making very clear asks from non-English speaking community groups, I think that, you know, that's something that we ought to both really value and consider how we integrate into this process. So thanks a lot for, for helping with that question.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair. So Eric, in terms of the HCD conversation, I know we had received a letter from Forella, Ron, and Motel. Thomas Mayhew made some good points. Did they discuss any of that as well with you, and is there a plan of attack on how to deal with those things, or is that something that you can't comment on?
Yeah, there is a plan of attack. I think we, you know, we discussed it in a lot of detail in the meeting with HCD. What I will say is, rather than saying exactly what we're going to do to address everything, you know, I will say that, you know, we have a plan, and, you know, we have to work out some of the analysis to see where it might go and to kind of verify that it, it meets the, you know, the statutory expectations. And just to be clear, you know, the HCD was really clear about, you know, the, the findings and the, the evidence that non-vacant sites will, can accommodate residential uses is not a, it's not a proof that they're looking for, it's not a guarantee, it's a, really, we're just making sure that there's nothing that's going to keep it from happening. And so, want to make, that, that is a, there's a lot of analysis that we have to do there, and a lot of, you know, we have to draft the findings and present them to folks, but there's, there is a path forward there.
Okay, and then follow-up question, based on that response that you just shared with us, in terms of outreach to Spanish-speaking community in general, by the time you all have, like, more of a definitive process of where you stand with the language edits, do you believe at that time it would be a good idea to have some sort of meeting prior to its presentation to the EPC of what those findings are with the Spanish-speaking folks somewhere around as soon as you know?
Yeah, I mean, we were, we've met with a couple of the Spanish-speaking advocacy organizations just recently. I think like you, like Stephanie said, and like Commissioner Nunez said, I think those meetings can be more productive when we are, you know, when we, there, I think that meeting with them, which we are open to doing, we are looking at ways of making sure that they're as productive as they can be.
Oh, no, no, I get that. I think the question is just more to follow up on what Alex had mentioned about engagement in terms of not just those groups, but just a general meeting with the Spanish-speaking population, members of the community, not just those two groups, right? So once you have something more definitive in writing, do you think that's something of that nature in presenting what the latest update is then at that time of said modifications? Could then we share that with the folks in a, I mean, a conference room within City Hall or at Rainstorm Park? That's more what I'm trying to get to, and that's just an idea out there that I'm sharing with you.
Yeah, this is, this is all very new, appreciate the input. This is all very new information for us right now, and, and we have some work that we have to do to come up with a game plan, but certainly that's, that's excellent input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian Haymeyer?
Not to pile on, Eric, is there anything you can share just in terms of general timeline of what comes next in terms of these revisions?
Sure, yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to be working on them as fast as we can. You know, I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to promise a date for the mission or council, but, you know, some of these grants that we want to make sure that we're getting, start to, you know, the application dates and things like that start around the end of March. So that's kind of a, you know, kind of an informal target for us, is to try to meet that for, for council adoption. Again, we don't know how much analysis is involved at this point. Again, our, our major goal is to try, just try to make sure that we're eligible for as many grants as we can.
Thank you.
There's no other commission discussion, then? Whitehall, can you call the rule?
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey? Sorry, can you? Okay, good, thank you. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner? Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yin?
Aye.
And Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yep. We will now move to item six, new business, election of Environmental Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair for 2023. So first we'll do is we'll open up nominations for Chair. Are there any nominations for the Chair of the EPC, Commissioner Nunez?
I would like to nominate Vice Chair Yin.
I was told that it's not necessarily for a second, but I should ask whether Vice Chair Yin is actually open to taking the position properly. Are you, are you willing to serve?
Thank you, Chair Cranston. I am willing and honored by the nomination. Thank you.
The other nominations? Not, then we will close nominations and Ms. Whitehall, please call the rule.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yin?
I believe I abstain from this.
Okay, and Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Looking forward to giving the next meeting to you. So I forgot to ask for public comment. Sandy, am I in trouble?
A little bit. I think you should provide an opportunity for public comment and then take the vote again.
Reverse.
Okay.
Is there any in the line like to fight comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, press star nine on your phone, phones users can mute and mute themselves with star six. The EPC clerk will start the timer. Don't know when your time is up. Are there anyone wishing to speak?
No one wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, so I'm going to take the vote again, Sandy?
I think we can let it stand. Thanks.
Okay. Right, then next item is the nominations for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair, Krishna Gutierrez? You're on mute. You're on mute.
I'm sorry, my mouse is a little crazy right now, so I didn't mean to click.
Okay, Vice Chair Yin?
Yes, I happily, oh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Happily nominate Hank, Commissioner Dempsey, who cannot speak right now, I believe, but Hank, if you are willing and able.
Mr. Dempsey, are you, are you willing to take the role?
I would happily accept.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Are you going to assume that your hands are up? Okay. All right, now I will open up for, for public comment. Sir, right or this time? Is there any, anyone on the line wishing to speak on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, press star nine on your phone. Phones users can mute and unmute themselves. With star six, the EPC clerk will start the timer. Don't know when your time is up.
No one wishing to speak on this item.
We'll bring it back to the commissions. And so we'll now take a roll call vote on the Vice Chair, Ms. Whitehall.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yin?
Aye.
And Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Everyone? Congratulations, new Chair Yin and new Vice Chair Dempsey. Next item on the agenda is, and just for clarity, they will take, I told them I finished this meeting and they get, they get to take the next meeting. So we will go to Commission Staff Announcements and Updates, Committee Reports. Commissioner Hamer?
Well, Chair, just before you move on to the next item, I wanted to say thank you. You have served not one, but two difficult years and doing it all from your home. We really appreciate your service and it's just been such a great, such a great experience to have you as our Chair, not once but twice. So thank you and excited to welcome Chair Yin and Vice Chair Dempsey. But thank you, Bill.
It's been an honor. Vice Chair Yin?
Without prolonging this here, here, and ditto to what Commissioner Hamer just said. Thank you very much for leading us so well these past two years. You've got big shoes to fill. I will do my best to serve you all well.
Vice Chair Dempsey?
I know I can't talk very well, but I just wanted to say to Chair Cranston or to Commissioner Cranston, you have been the Chair for as long as I've been on EPC. And I have learned a ton from you. I really have. So I just want to say thank you. I'm really glad I get to serve on this commission with you and you've been a credit to it. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been an honor. I really appreciated the time, but I'm very, very much looking forward to passing the top baton at the next meeting. Other announcements? We have, our next meeting is still scheduled for the 18th, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, so other announcements, I'm sorry, I fell asleep for a second there. Yeah, so we actually don't have anything scheduled for the 18th, so enjoy your Martin Luther King weekend. February 1st, we do have a tentative item. It's the Affordable Housing Project and Public Storage Project on Terabella. So this is again tentative. We are scheduled to return to the chambers on February 1st, so that will be exciting. I am going to send out emails as soon as I log off right now to see if I can schedule times for people to come in and reacquaint themselves with the chambers. Of course, we have to do this in groups of three or less. But that is something that we will make sure we do over the next month so that people feel prepared when we dive in.
Yep. Any other announcements? Not, and we will adjourn the Environmental Planning Commission meeting of January 4th at 7:38 PM. Thank you, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Thanks all.
To you too. Happy New Year.